Call the Fairview Planning Commission meeting to order on May 8th at 7:07 PM. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as our own.
Thank you. We'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. First and a second. Any discussion?
I believe there was a request for new business number four to come off.
That is correct.
Alright, we'll strike number four at the request of the applicant. Additional items? Yes, sir?
We should have a request to add an additional bond setting for Superior Springs Phase 2.
Okay, so we'll just add that to item four on bonds, letters and credits. Alright, any other additional comments? Staff's good. First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Move into citizens' comments.
No sign.
One day, the citizens will talk to us, but not tonight. We'll move into approval of minutes from April 10th, 2018, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
First?
I'll second.
Second? Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll move into new business. Final plat Willowcrest subdivision, 21 proposed lots on 14.31 acres, property located along Horn Tavern Road, tax map 22 parcel 66, R20 zoning district, property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Winston County. I believe we have, we have no staff comments on this one. Good evening. If you could just state your name for me.
Dan Reynolds.
Thank you, sir. Final plat, any questions for the applicant?
So, on the buffer, y'all, y'all have come up with a plan with, between the neighborhood that was, look at me, kinda funny.
Well, I have the open space here on the, on that far side behind lots one through 10 and all the way down into phase two. Was it 50, 75 feet?
Okay. And are you gonna line that up with trees or?
It's already, it's, I haven't touched it since we, since we bought the property.
I just recall some discussion, I don't know.
Oh yeah, no, there definitely was, and that's why we added the open space. And, and I left, I think there's notes in there that say it will be left untouched, and then we added an easement there in the back to access the detention basin, and that, that open space will be managed by the homeowner association.
Yeah. And it has a certain amount of trees there that you're not touching, and I understand you're saying that, but I know there was discussion about like a buffer between the neighborhoods, but I guess there's enough trees that
Oh yeah.
that would be substantial.
It is heavily wooded.
Okay. I just know that was one of the concerns with the citizens.
So what's going into the open space right now is just being left is wild?
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
If you would, just make sure your mic's on for me and talk to it.
Does the tree board sign off on that? Do they go and evaluate the trees that are there?
No, not, not for residential. It's only, only time the tree board would be involved would be commercial.
And they're just leaving the area undisturbed, so there's no improvement, sir?
Now, I do have one question. I understand you've got the open space that, that's wooded. However, where the detention pond is, I assume you're gonna have to remove trees there. So, are y'all gonna try to replant something towards the top there?
There's a 30, 30 feet between the, the neighboring property or the neighboring subdivision and that detention pond that we didn't disturb, that, that we, we've had there when we originally planned the detention basin, and then it opens back up again to 75 feet after the detention basin area. That basin is also gonna be fenced all the way around it, preventing really any interaction between the two subdivisions.
I just wanna make sure that 30-foot space, though, that it was left untouched as well.
Yeah, completely. Everything in that open space and that non-distur- disturbance easement hasn't, hasn't been touched since the day we bought the property. I might have walked in it a couple times, but, you know, that's, that's it. No development.
Any additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie, thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Item number two, new business, master development plan Fernville Springs Apartments, 14 proposed units on 1.17 acres, property located along Fernville Road, tax map 42, part of parcel 63, RM 12 zoning district, property owned by McGeehee Family Trust. Good evening, if you could state your name for me, sir?
Trent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We do have some staff comments, Mr. Jenkins, if you could read them in for me.
Sure. Number one, the development should be sprinkled for fire protection, add note and show fire lane and meter. Number two, per section 5-104.1, development, development standards for multifamily, family dwellings, there should be a six-foot fence enclosing the perimeter of the property, dumpster areas should be screened, and street area lights should be provided. Number three, clarify the assembly for the fire hydrant and the line size that the fire hydrant is on. Number four, label one ADA space as van accessible. Number five, geotechnical verifications of suitable fill material and compaction will be required prior to building permit issuance for the northern proposed building. Number six, a curb cut or catch basin is needed in the northeastern corner of the parking area where all the storm water from the parking area is flowing to the, to the designed low point. Number seven, please provide the invert elevation of the existing culvert under Fernville Road to verify that the proposed culvert just to the east is lower than the existing culvert. Number eight, any planning commission approvals should be contingent upon verification of the submitted stormwater calculations. Stormwater calculations, stormwater calcu- calculations should include an assessment of the 100-year storm event. While the proposed stormwater infrastructure is only required to be sized for the 25-year storm overtopping of Fernville Road, the proposed parking lot and the proposed apartment building during the 100-year event should not occur.
Thank you, sir. That's quite a few notes. Any chance you've got a copy of that?
She just gave me those, yes.
Anything on there directly stand out as an objection or?
And, no, there's nothing, these are, from my perspective, they're pretty minor.
Sir?
Just some little drafting changes. Some of these, I thought, made it onto the final smittle, but maybe not.
Additional questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
First and a second? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Nay.
Alright, just gonna go one more time to make sure we got it.
Probably should do a roll call.
Alright, we go a roll call, we'll start with Mr. Kelly.
Let me ask you a question first.
Yes, sir?
Are the staff comments gonna be incorporated in that then?
That's a great question.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
That's a great question. If you wanna remove your second and your first, maybe we could amend our motion or create a new motion to include the staff comment notes. That's a good question, Mr. Kelly. So we, we had a second, Ms. Qualls, if, if you wanna remove your second. Would you like to remove your second?
Yes.
And I'll remove my first, and I would like to change it to include all the staff comments.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve, including all the staff comments.
To be required.
Be required. So now we have a first, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second now? We'll try this again, we'll still just go by a roll call just to make sure. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Jenkins. Aye, Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Much carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Move to item three. Development plans, site construction plans, Fernville Springs, phase four, 36 proposed units on 5.46 acres, property located off Fernville Springs Way, tax map 42, part of parcel 63, RM 12 zoning district, property owned by McGeehee Family Trust. Mr. Smith, you staying with us? So we'll go into staff comments, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir. Number one, provide dimensions of all proposed units. Number two, street names may need to be revised to avoid confusion for E911. Number three, development should be sprinkled for fire protection, add note and show fire line and meter. Number four, add transitional buffer alongside a budding single-family residential. Number five, TDEC construction stormwater permitting requirements, call for a 30-foot undisturbed buffer from the top of stream bank. It is likely that this buffer requirement will drastically alter the proposed layout of the development. If the desire is to proceed with the proposed layout, which provides for an approximate 15-foot buffer, a TDEC notice of coverage will be required to be submitted to the city prior to any city permits or pre-construction meetings being held. Number six, geotechnical verifications of suitable fill material and compaction will be required prior to building permits being issued for units 44 through 53 and 73 through 76. Number seven, the proposed private streets are to comply with section 4-108 of the subregs which requires that all private streets conform to city street standards outlined in section 4-106.2 of the subregs. Please revise plans accordingly. Additionally, there is concern that having garages directly adjacent to the travelway of the street will not provide adequate sight distance for vehicles traveling the street to see vehicles backing out of their garages directly onto the street. Number eight, any planning commission approval should be contingent upon verification of the submitted stormwater calculations. Stormwater calculations should include an assortment of the 100-year storm event, God bless you. While the proposed stormwater infrastructure is only required to be sized for the 25-year storm overtopping of Fernville Road, the proposed parking lot and the proposed apartment building during the 100-year event should not occur.
Thank you, sir. Remember, we talked about that stream in the conceptual, and you guys relocated or moved it up some?
We provided a 15-foot buffer, which I believe is the minimum, you have to have an average of 30-foot. We have an average of 42 or 43 feet.
So you just have to get some notice of coverage from TDEC?
Correct.
Okay. But you think you're gonna hit that, hopefully hit that requirement?
Correct.
When will you know if you get that coverage?
Well, under, any construction project, one acre or larger, we have to get that notice of coverage anyways. That would probably be after you, hopefully, hopefully you give an approval, then we would submit for coverage to the state, I'm guessing in approximately three weeks.
Besides number five, number seven too, with the garages in the street. Can y'all repeat five and seven for me, please? Maybe I can put a little?
You should have it right there in front of you, too.
Yeah, the number seven is the one I was talking about, the garages. Yes. Yeah, we did, I think there's eight of these that we did add garages to, or two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, there's 12 that's got garages. Six, eight of those are fairly close to the street, but since this is a private road with very little traffic, and since these are geared towards 55 and older community, it's, it's not in the restrictions, but most of what we've sold to in the first three phases of Fernville Springs have been people that are 55 and older, there's a huge demand for the garages.
Is there not anything you can do to fix the problem?
Not without using, losing units.
Mr. Owens, would you mind shedding some light on that? Because I'm assuming that, that one came from you, is that right?
Yeah, I mean.
So what's, what, what is the main concern there, and then how would you recommend they address it?
The main concern is, again, you, you've got a garage that's, I want to say, two or three feet off the back of the curb, three, three feet off the back of the curb, so.
Nice.
I mean, it's a vehicular safety concern, there, there's no necessarily restriction against it, but just from a design standpoint, I think there's some concern that needs to be discussed.
So.
Not saying it can't be, can't be executed the way that it's proposed tonight, but everyone be aware of, of the concern.
So the main concern being that if I were pulling out of my garage, people wouldn't notice that I'm actually coming out of that thing until, I mean, you've got three feet by the time the rear of my car exits the garage and time it enters the road.
You're, as a driver pulling out of the garage, you're still in the garage and not being able to see anything.
And people are going 15, 25 miles an hour down that road, probably.
Potentially.
Yeah. Makes sense.
You know, the estimated length, you say three feet, is that what you said, of the driveways?
I believe that's correct, I believe that's what it scales to. There's no way the driver can look left, right to see if anybody's coming, because they'll say the garage completely. Unless they back into the garage.
Mr. Mangram, is that how phase one and two, is it the same as the first two phases, or was it?
Carports.
We had no garages in the first three phases, but a lot of them do have carports that are right on the edge of the asphalt. Now, you know, keep in mind that a carport doesn't have enclosed sides, so you do have some visibility.
Is the garage on the front of the unit, or the back of the unit?
They're on the front.
Would a speed limit sign, or the speed limit, a low-speed limit remedy that problem, or?
It would help.
Or limiting trees or bushes that are planted out there, things like that, would that help?
It would help, certainly.
Is it all garage, or do they have a driveway space to, just all garage?
Eight of them, just all garage, it's, it's literally three feet behind the curve where the garage starts, not all of them with garages are that way, some of them do have some visibility difference. Six, oh, two, four, six, eight, 10 of the, 10 of those with garages on that cul-de-sac. So the drive-through traffic on that, unless they're living on, in that cul-de-sac, they're probably not even gonna be in there.
Are these going, are they gonna look similar to the first phases?
The ones with the carports were using the exact floor plans, other than the fact that all the one stories over there now in phases one through three, they are two units to the, to a building. These, we put four to a building only because the way this piece of land lays, we just had to pack them in. Which the, the only real difference it really makes from a fire protection is if there were just two units in a building, we would not have to sprinkle those buildings accord, according to current city standards, but we're fine with sprinkling those buildings, it's not a big deal. And, and one thing for clarification, these will be sprinkled individually. There won't be a, each building won't have like a riser that sprinkles the whole building, they will individually have their own shut-offs for the sprinklers in each unit.
Well, you've designed it, the ones that have the driveway right on the, the street or alley or, or through a fair, there's no way for anybody to park other than pulling on into a dri- their garage, is that correct?
That's correct, and we do have overflow.
I know you have all set parking, but, but you still, if you're coming home, or if you're coming, pulling your car out to load it or unload it, you would obstruct other traffic, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, there is some overflow parking, and keep in mind, a lot, we have several people that live there now that doesn't, they do not drive. They, like I said, I, I sold two to some ladies last year, they were in the same building, one of them was 82, one of them was 83. So we have a lot of older people that's, that's buying these.
I guess for me, that, that
Too dense for me.
That's just a, a big drag flag. I, I live on, I have to go down the street with no driveways, there's nowhere for people to park, they park along the edge of the street, and I, I just see that as being a problem, I mean, and they've got a 10-foot driveway or 15-foot driveway, and there's still people parked up and down the street all the time. I, I don't know how, I.
But you're awake.
What's the square footage of, of these units?
It can be restricted.
Say that again, sorry.
What's the square footage of these units?
They're roughly 1,550 square feet per unit.
Mr. Owens, is, that center section, that cul-de-sac, is that a sidewalk that goes around that? Is, and that's where we're talking about with the garages, correct?
The center island.
No, so the garages
Is that up the top part?
The garages are going to be, I think, yeah, on the top, or northwest, top-left corner of the cul-de-sac there, there's four units with garages. And then, on the opposite side of the cul-de-sac closest to the stream, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight units with garages on the right-hand side of the development, if you're looking at this sheet here. So 72, 66 through 72 on the right-hand side, and then 73 through 76 on the northwest, in the northwest corner, all have garages. So there's not any sidewalk that's going in front of any of those, correct? No, correct.
I kinda have a, as much as I know these are needed, and in our communities, especially something that's kinda geared, even though you can't restrict, there's no restriction, right, Mr. Mangram, on who can buy it? Just because you're selling it more to, it's supposed to be a 50-plus neighborhood, but there's no restriction, so anybody can buy it, correct?
That is correct. Now, keep in mind, these, these are two-bedroom.
Mr. Owens, I know we talked a lot about the garages and the safety issues there, but also on line seven, you mentioned the proposed private streets are to comply with section 4108 of the subregs. So that all private streets conform with the city street standards, please revise plans accordingly. What would they need to revise there? What actually needs to change in those private streets?
If, if full compliance was, was garnered, then the paved width would be 24 feet wide instead of 20. There would be a 630 curb and gutter instead of a four-inch mountable curb, and there would be sidewalks on both sides of the street. And at that point, you're gonna have your sidewalk right up on your garage, if you're doing it on both sides, correct? Because you've got a three-foot distance between the garage and the street, get added four more feet. Yeah. So you're a foot away for paved, then where's your sidewalk gonna go? In essence, you would lose several units. I would anticipate that the, the layout would be completely revised.
So that's probably even a bigger issue than the garage situation?
Well, in my opinion, they, they kinda go hand in hand, because if, if the city street requirement is adhered to, then there's no way you can get garages in. Then if, if the current cross-section of road is, is designated or deemed appropriate, then the garages, you would still need to be addressed, or. Guys?
Would they have to seek a variance for that road width to be 20 instead of 24, which is the required standard?
With it being, Kristen, do you know the specific zoning designation? I don't believe it has a.
Uh, it's RM 12, but I think because that's in the subdivision regulations, this body can, can, can waive that, that requirement. It wouldn't need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Correct.
For instance.
We're currently matching the existing streets in the previously approved phase of Fernville Springs, which has no curves at all. We did add a, a curb to this, but we're trying to keep that curb fairly minimum, considering that it's, it's older people, and we're trying to keep the steps down as far as the height, and trying to make it all as, as easy as we can make it.
And that is correct, the, the existing cross-section under prior phases is approximately 20 feet wide. But the requirement to not have sidewalks, it just seems to me, if you're trying to market this to a 55 and above, seems like a sidewalk would be something that, that people there would want, instead of, you know, walking in the road to go see neighbors and such.
But, but it's also, keep in mind, it's, the, the more that you put on, this is all private property, all private streets, all that's more maintenance and, for the HOA.
I guess my argument there would just be, there's not a whole lot of maintenance to a sidewalk.
You'd be surprised.
Right, you have to edge it.
We had a bunch buckle up down one hundred over the last few years that have required quite a few repairs.
Yeah, and the city struggles maintaining theirs, so.
We're also not asking the people to come out and do it themselves, they'd probably hire someone to do it.
I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, I know that if this is gonna be connected to Phase one and two, I think I would feel better about some of the keeping it similar. So like the carport, where you would have the safety issues not there, the private road, that's a private road, correct? So it didn't have to meet the city standards. You know, I think if it was consistent, and it, it is connected, the roads are connected, you're gonna do a drive-through, you know, I think as it is, that would be easier. But I kinda, I'm kind of like hesitant, because we know there's a safety issue to even consider it. And I, I just wondered if there was any reasoning why you didn't stick with the same style.
Because I've had a ton of phone calls of people that love the layout, they just prefer the garage. So we, we tried to add a few garages to accommodate that, and keep it, the carports too, they're, not all of them over there have carports, they're optional, so some people just park, you know, on a parking pad with no cover over it, so.
Just for quick reference, the shorter driveway into a garage has become more common. Like, we see it quite a bit, but it's like a five-foot drive, and it's usually like an alley application, so it'd be on the rear side. But the traffic there would probably be comparable to alley traffic, but it's just not as aesthetically appeasing on the front.
Now, this is the front of the property as well.
If you go to Franklin, look at Reed Hill Commons, they have some of these very similar to this, that, that the garages are, are right up on the street, and then you've got River Plantation, they are rear entry, but them buildings are turned around backwards to start with, to the road, and, and they back right out on, to the road. Now, they are carports, but on one side, they have storage units, so you can't see out anyway, and they literally back right out into the, to the roadway.
I'm, I'm still concerned about the idea of a car backing out and being in the road before you can actually see who's coming, left or right. Additionally, you're talking about a retirement community. A lot of people have grandchildren, they're coming and going, they're playing, there's no sidewalks, so they're in the street in that situation. It just, it seems to be an unnecessary risk.
Me, it's just, no matter what you do in a garage, you're gonna have some extra stuff, whether it's clothesbox, or golf clubs, or something, they don't take care of the yard. But if you pull up, and you wanna unload your groceries, or a suitcase from traveling or something, and if you've got anything inside your garage where you can't open your doors, you've gotta back out to get the, to unload or load your car, and therefore, you're gonna obstruct traffic. And even though it's not a lot of traffic, you have to quit what you're doing, pull the car into the garage to let somebody buy it. You can't pull up a little bit, because those streets are not wide enough, I don't think, if you're gonna do what you're doing here. In my opinion, you either gotta give more to the street, or you gotta give more to the driveway, one or the other, because I just don't see enough room to back out blind, and then, if it's an older person, they can't jockey a car around as well as a younger person can anyway, but. I'm seventy-two, so I'm, but anyway, to me, it's just, I mean, it might be an acceptable plan, but it's dang sure not a good plan. I just think something should be thought out on that a little bit more, I don't know what it would be, but that, that to me is just not an attractive plan. Yeah, there's some needs, people want garages, and I can understand that. But I just think there's a better way.
About motion detector lights, would that, that help?
Well, if, if anybody's been over there during the day, even in the evening at five o'clock, and most people think traffic's high because people are coming home, they're not coming home, they're already there, they don't work. So the, the traffic over there is, it's, it's minute.
But this thing's gonna be there for, for a while, so we, we have to, in my opinion, approve the development for not only what is, but what, what it's gonna be. And it may be fifty-five and older for, forever, but it could be something else. I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't prohibit a young family moving in there, and they've got strollers and everything else. That could, that's highly possible down the road. So that's where I see the, the rub on the, those tight driveways.
I, I, you're right about River Plantation, I mean, it comes right out, they, they're blocked, I get it. But I agree with Mr. Anderson, it's like, if, if you could fix one, then the other wouldn't be as bad. Like, if you could do the wider roads, then the garage would probably not be as much of a problem. They still would have the restriction of vision, but I guess it would be at the risk of the owner knowing that they're, you know, purchasing a townhome with, you know, that issue. So, you know, that's the only thing, you got two things going on, but like Mr. Owens said, they kind of go together. So, but I think if you could find way, one way to fix one of them, it might help the situation.
Can we go back to the previous slide? Because I, I think it shows some of those buildings sitting off the road a little more than that slide does.
One more?
Well, if we can enlarge that one now. Not that one.
Go back where you were, Sissy.
Yeah, that one.
Try and zoom in.
See units seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, they're, they're off of the asphalt quite a bit more. So is seventy-one and seventy-two. Could, could we not move sixty-nine and seventy back? Upper right-hand corner. Spring goes away. Sixty-nine and seventy, we can move those back as well, because it's, it's a long ways off of that buffer that we've gotta leave. So the issue is just gonna be those four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight, because those, we, they can't be moved because of the buffer.
Any additional discussion, you wanna make a motion?
I'll go ahead and try to make a motion. Is that all right?
Yep.
Jenkins, before you get started-
Yes, sir.
If I might ask, Mr. Mangram, units sixty-one through seventy-two appear to have a finished floor elevation approximately ten feet higher than the adjacent grade, but there's no grading across the back, is that, what, how are we gonna address that?
Somebody's built on a stem wall.
There, there will be stem wall, okay, that's what I was assuming, I just wanted to make sure that was, okay, thank you.
Would a variance on the buffer help?
I think that's, that's ours, yeah.
State requirement?
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion then, that the plans be revised according to Mr. Owens' recommendations here, specifically that the streets, the private streets comply with the city street standards outlined in Section 4106-2 of the subregs, and that we come up with some alternate solution for the garage vision standard there, the, the, what am I trying to say here? Someone help me out here, the safety, the safety issue that's gonna be there.
Ask you a question on that, are you talking about the curb and gutter as well, or just the street width?
Say that one more time.
Are you referring to the curb and gutter as well on the city standards, or just the street width?
Treat it like a standard city street, like Will was talking about.
So it won't match what's, match the previous phase?
Mr. Owen, the city standards for the street width, twenty-four feet plus sidewalks, correct?
That's the current standard, yes.
Yeah, because the way I look at it, these people, if they live there, they have nowhere to get around. If they are a healthy active, let's say we go with your, your idea that it's a fifty-five and over community, they have nowhere to walk around their community, except for in the middle of the road, I just don't think that's acceptable.
We have a motion, just confirm, you, you said all the staff comments, and then you said in particular, those additional ones, so we have a first. Second, Anderson. Any additional discussion or questions?
I got a question.
Callie?
Enlarging the street isn't gonna get you the sidewalk though, right, it's just gonna take up the room. So what if he just, sixty-five through sixty-eight makes those carports? Because he says he can move sixty-nine through, sixty-nine and seventy back, and there's more room on the other ones anyway. I mean, does that make any sense?
No, it does, I think-
Makes sense to me.
I think our motion is tasking him with finding that solution to fit those requirements, so.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
That's, that solution may not be a possible solution. If you look at the development to, the southern half, we're up against building setback lines on both sides. You're adding, I believe, at least eight feet that doesn't exist.
Was there an understanding, when you designed this, that you would have to meet the city requirements for streets, or ask for a variance?
Here, the city's regs show a twenty-two-foot wide road.
But it's a twenty-foot road right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, it shows a twenty-foot road with curbs, which made it twenty-two, which is what we, we show.
Mr. Owens, is that correct, or not?
Don't believe so.
We were, we were matching the existing phase of the street, trying to make it be uniform as possible, trying to keep expenses down, get the HOA fees reasonable for, for these people.
To me, I, I think that's maybe more the situation here that's applicable, as we've seen in other developments with final phases of areas that were previously done, and trying to match similar cross-sections. So, as I've told you guys always, I'm going to present in our comments, you know, what the standard is. It may or may not be the best approach to any particular item in front of you. I wouldn't necessarily be objected to the twenty-foot road width with the proposed curb and gutter. I do think that, that sidewalks are needed on both sides, and I do think that those garage units should be pushed back at least twenty feet from the edge of the curb. Think if those, those items can be accomplished, then the twenty-foot road width and the proposed curb and gutter section suitable, in my opinion, in, in that it matches the, the previous sections. I think there's an opportunity, as already stated, to shift units sixty-nine through seventy-two, and kind of re, maybe reorient that cul-de-sac slightly, so that those four units and the four units across the street have the twenty-foot of driveway before the garage starts. And then we may, I, I don't see that that's feasible. Five through sixty-eight, so those may, those may just have to be converted back to carport units.
Just for my education and to answer Mr. Burks' question, what is the reg though?
It's twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna make sure he wasn't working under something that said something different. It is twenty-four, curb and gutter, sidewalks on both sides. So you would say it's okay to do a variance to allow a twenty-foot width with curb and gutter, as long as you have sidewalks on both sides?
And the offset garages. And, and in line and in accordance with similar actions that you've taken in the past for final phases of pre-existing developments.
Consider withdrawing your second in motion and revising.
I'll withdraw mine. Mr. Anderson withdraws his second, Mr. Jenkins?
I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion, and Commissioner Burks, since you seem to have a solid understanding of how to construct that sentence, go ahead.
I'd make a motion that we approve, along with the included staff comments, but allow a variance to a twenty-foot wide road with curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides, as well as additional setbacks, as suggested by the engineer for the garage units.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Any additional discussion?
Okay, and will that include the recommendations from the engineer on the certain units that would need to be a carport?
I think, I think it would capture it, and if they have to obtain a, a five-foot sidewalk or setback, they would have to, to make it work, they might have to go to the carport.
Yeah, I'm just saying for the record, because he did mention-
They may have another solution.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aries, yes, sir. Second was Jenkins. All right, we'll move to the new number four, which is previous number five. Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on the rezoning of property requested by Tony Cavender, property located along Cox Pike, Tax Map forty-three, parcel twenty-three, one-hundred and four point seven acres, current zoning district RS forty, proposed zoning district R twenty pud. We do have just a little staff comment, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir, the staff did not have adequate time to perform a comprehensive review of the submitted plan.
I think we need a table, guys.
I'd make a motion to defer based upon that staff comment, so that the staff and the engineer will have time to sufficiently review the plan.
I'll second the motion.
We have a Burks first for deferment, and a second by Jenkins, any additional discussion?
I have some. I would like to know about, like, a traffic study before, and have that conversation, if y'all would come up, even though it's gonna be deferred, or maybe, depending how the vote goes, but since you're here, let's talk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's, we're gonna defer it to get more information, if everybody votes that way. But there are some concerns, this is off of Cox Pike, right? And we're turn, there's a kind of curve, correct? So I have a concern about the traffic flow, so did you have intentions of getting that, a traffic study?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you're gonna bring that back if it does get deferred before?
Before the next meeting, yes, I'll have you, yeah, yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Mr. Owens, in regards to the traffic study. Is it appropriate to request that the city get a traffic study done and just be reimbursed by the developer, so that we can set the parameters?
so that we can set the parameters that we feel are appropriate?
That would be atypical.
Or we can just set out what the parameters are?
Correct.
Okay. What parameters would you suggest? Based upon the location of this property?
Intersection study, or something like that, Will?
Yeah, I think we'd be looking at, obviously not just the proposed intersection at Cox Pike, but, the Hall Lane intersection, probably one or two intersections on each, both sides of Cox Pike. I don't know, because I haven't had a chance to study the area to see for sure, but, I can certainly send that, review that, make an assessment, and send that to the applicant.
That'd be acceptable, Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir, that's fine, that'd work, that'd work great.
Might as well get it right the first time, so there's no question about it later.
I appreciate you doing that, yes, yes, sir.
I think I would like it probably to go back as far as, and the name is slipping me right now, but it connects to Dice, uh, Lamplie. Anybody local? Well, it's no, um, it, it does connect to Northwest. But I want it past the subdivisions that are, like, pulsed in place.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, all the, sub, the new, um, phase, go past that area, and there's a name of road, I'll get it for you. I just can't think of it right now.
You're like me, I.
Lake Road.
That's the other way, going back.
And, um, Northwest Highway.
I think it's Anderson, for some reason.
Yeah, there's Northwest Highway to the left, to the west.
It, it runs into Northwest.
Where it turns.
Where it turns.
Wayne's Lane?
Huh?
Wayne's Lane?
No, it, but it's past that.
I don't have it on this map, I'm sorry.
I think it's, for some reason.
Donald Wilson Drive is the pulsed-in-place entrance.
Yeah, so it goes past that, and it actually runs into Northwest Highway.
And at Donald Wilson, won't there also be an, an additional entrance past that for the new phase?
Just pa, just west of Donald Wilson, there will be, correct? For the new phase of, or pulsed-in to, or, Winwood Park.
Maybe.
Winwood Park.
So if it's on Northwest, you need a traffic study coming out Northwest to one hundred, I mean, ninety-six.
Will, you'll be able to look at that and take into account all the current subdivisions of the ones that are being planned, so that we can get a full picture.
I, I'll take a look at that, to a reasonable degree of responsibility for this particular application. Yeah.
You sound like a lawyer today.
That was good.
I can sound like a lot of things sometimes. I mean, it's not fair to, obviously, it's not fair to make them assess the entirety of Cox Pike, so that's what I'm trying to get at, is there's, there's some level of agreement that would need to occur, as far as the scope.
Yeah.
That, that's fine, I was asking, you'll go out there and look at it and do what's appropriate? Awesome.
Um, what I'm, the road I'm thinking of is, comes Pine Crest, that subdivision comes across and goes straight across, can you? My brother.
Crow Cut.
What is?
That's Crow Cut.
Crow Cut, I think I tried, yeah.
That's, I think you're going the other way, but Crow Cut does run in, but once it, the name change, Crow, changes, but anyway, we'll figure it out, but you're right.
Mike, Mike grew up about a mile from there and can't even tell us, can't.
Come on, Mike. What is it? Oh, okay. There you go, that's it. And I, I mean, I think that's reasonable, because it's not that far down. And I don't think we're, uh, but we'll take a look at it and talk.
All right.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, while we got you here, where the Northwest and the Northeast roads terminate up there, do you have any future plans to develop beyond that? Are they going somewhere? Well, actually, you know, we, the, I'm, I'm got my bearings turned around now, the, uh, north, if you're looking at the drawing, the northeast entrance up there, we're looking at that property to try to tie into Lake Road. We're looking at an option, and we've, we've actually met with, uh, you know, Scott has helped us here communicate with that neighbor, and we've actually been in some conversation with him, but that, that's another option of ours, is to tie that road into Lake Road, to have an additional access up there to that side. But to answer your question, yes, to that, the one in the northeast, but. The one on the east side of the map that just goes off the map? Yes, well, no, actually, we're, no, not that one, we, we thought we could on that one, but that's not the property. It's actually the one that where that road goes straight north. The, the northeast one going north-north, that's, that's the property there that tees into, that's on Lake Road. Okay. That, we originally thought we could tie into that road, but that one's not the one that's, we could tackle.
Okay, so I, and I know we're, um, probably not to this point, but I want to go ahead and have these conversations, since y'all are here. You know, this is going to back up to Stable Acres, Lincoln Park, so is, and that'll be the first thing, we'll have everybody come in, soon as they, um, see it on the agenda. I want to know what you're going to do, because it looks like, um, let's say, one sixty-four to one sixty-three is going to go right back up to Stable Acres, so is the, I want a little information on the, um, type of homes, and if they're going to be comparable to what they're backing up to.
Yeah, well, as far as Tony, are they going to be, yes. He said, Tony says starting roughly at the three-eighties, so comparable. And the, the lots that are surrounded, that all those are one hundred by two hundred, and the Lincoln Park and the, you know, the other subdivision there, it's, it's all going to be separated by step fields, so they're not going to have, really, you only have six or seven lots up along that western edge that are buttoned at anyhow, the whole subdivision. There's going to be probably a couple hundred feet off of there with the stuff and creeks and stuff.
Well, Stable Acres is going, of course, most of them are acre lots, so it won't be right. But, you know, in this initial drawings, there's really no buffer, so you're backing up, and they're in the five-hundred, six-hundred dollar range, and you're going to put a house that's in the three-hundred.
If we have to put a buffer, I mean, we have to, yeah, and, and it is wooded down through there, it's heavily wooded, but, you know, I mean, we're not opposed to leaving a buffer, leaving the, you know, existing landscaping through there, and pulling the ditches off of that, so they stay there.
Okay.
We've actually got some mo, room to pull that road over to, to the east, we're actually working with a step system drip field right now, so to determine exactly where the soils are. We've already got a preliminary done, uh, so we know close where they're at, but until we get the grid completed, we don't know one-hundred percent. So we can massage some of that, if that's a concern. So when I was drove, I drove over there today to check everything out, and there's not a whole lot of space between Hall Lane and the other little, you know, proposed road there. Yeah. I'm just trying to think if, is, is that too, would that be too close? Would there, there be any sort of a safety issue right there with those two roads coming out on a Cox Pike, no more than, what is it, probably fifty feet from one another? It's pretty close. Uh, I don't know what, let's see, it's, no, it's about, uh, I've got, that L-one distance is a,
Hundred and eighty-five feet?
Yeah, about a hundred, but, you know, let's just say it's a hundred feet, but you're, yeah, a hundred feet. Okay, I, like I said, I'm, I'm asking, is there a safety issue there? I, I don't know. Well, I mean, we'll look at the site triangles and stuff like that, but the majority of our traffic's going to be coming out that main interest. We don't want to run our, you know, the majority of our traffic through those handful of lots, you know, those ten lots through there. So we're trying to, that's, and we, I, I would rather have our entrance and stuff located on ours kind of coming through there, but we can probably, when we do our traffic study and our intersection analysis and stuff, if we have to do some widening or modi, modifying the road out there, we could clean that up anyhow. Gotcha. Because it's, it's an existing drive, that's where he brings out farm equipment and stuff like that anyhow now. So you'd propose that, that existing farm equipment kind of unpaved area right there? That would be the main entrance? Yes, sir. And that Hall Lane would just so happen to end up in there? You know, we'd like to fix it up, have a nice grand entrance with, you know, tree scape and stuff all through there, and and modify that existing pavement and stuff out front to accommodate that. Yeah. And then lot number eighty-six, that's a lot that currently has the home on it, correct? Correct, we're going to, our, our goal is to keep that house there, modify it, clean it up, fix it up, keep that nice barn and stuff. If you've been out there, it's a really nice, and the house doesn't need a lot of work to fix it up, so we would like to keep that, fix it up, modernize it some in there, and then resell it, because it's got such a nice barn and, and house on it and stuff, and we'd like to keep that fill out there, and, and, and that's why I did the road across the front of it, right through there, and then on both sides. You don't think it would clash with the other homes that you're going to build there? Well, we're, you know, Tony's proposing to, you know, to go in and modify, and if you hadn't been out to Otter Creek and seen what he's done to that existing house out there, it's, he's really taken that, gutted that whole house out and put, maxed it out with everything. So it's, it would, it, it'll stand comparable to anything they're going to put out there. Okay.
Any additional discussion? So first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Carries, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Well, thank you for your comments and help.
Move over to bonds and letters of credit. First item, Scarborough Village, a letter of credit in the amount of fifty-two thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage, and other improvements specified by the approved plans. The planning commission set the bond on February twelfth, two thousand and eight. Bond expires May nineteenth, twenty eighteen. So the item has been renewed, and so it's good to go, no action needed? All right, so we'll move to item, next item on bonds and credit, letters of credit, Deer Valley Downs. Letter of credit in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage, and other improvements specified by the approved plans. The planning commission set the bond on November tenth, twenty fourteen. The planning commission reduced the bond on August ninth, twenty sixteen, to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Bond expires May nineteenth, twenty eighteen. So item is in the process of being renewed by the bank. Any update there, still the same status? Anyone, uh, Cavender, do you have any update on that bond?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll probably should be, have it back into the city by Friday, and we've also already scheduled our top coat with Holland Contractors to go in and top coat, and, uh, along with our landscaping and our trees.
Thank you, sir. So proper action would just be to call it, just in case anything happens, then if it renews, it'd be, if anyone wants to make a motion?
Motion to call the bond if not renewed.
First?
Second.
Second, Kelly? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? And then we have the one addition of Sweetbrier Springs bond, uh, per the staff. So any additional comments to that Sweetbrier Springs of value or date of expiration, or is, is the applicant asked to, to lower it, or?
No, he's, he's, uh, the question that'd be set.
Okay, yeah.
So we're finally gonna, they're gonna build?
Mr. Owens, are you working on that right now?
No pressure.
Okay. Recommendation for a performance bond amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and a reclamation bond amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Hundred and eighty?
One, eight, zero, yes.
Sure. The city engineer recommendation, a performance bond, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, reclamation bond of a hundred and eighty thousand. Entertain a motion?
Motion to set the bonds, the performance and the reclamation bond, per the numbers provided by the city engineer.
Second.
First and second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Bond set? On staff comments, there's a Willow Crest, but we didn't add that, right?
We meant to do it after the final plat was approved on, on the first item of new business, and we, we forgot. I don't know if that's something that we can add now or go back to, or how that works.
Can it be added now? So just entertain a motion to add a, a new item of bonded letter?
I'd like to go to make a motion to add, uh, the Willow Crest Phase One request to set the performance bond as item number nine on the bonds, letters of credit.
Second.
First and a second to add the Willow Crest to the bonds and letters of credit. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? All right, we're at it, so now we will go, where, do we have a number to set?
Performance bond recommendation for Willow Crest Phase One, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. This will be a conversion, there's currently a reclamation bond in hand by the city. Uh, as we discussed hurriedly at the end of the work session, this is a situation where they desire to go ahead and have the, the, uh, plat that was approved tonight, go ahead and get it recorded. So I went out to the site this afternoon and assessed the current condition of the improvements that have been made to date, and the three hundred and ninety-four thousand, uh, number reflects my estimated cost for the remaining work, plus the twenty-five percent as mandated by the subregs.
Sir?
Set a reclamation bond, you said, or performance bond?
It's a performance bond. They currently have a reclamation in place, so they could go ahead and get started, uh, and they're desiring to convert that over, or provide a performance bond, um, so they can go ahead and get the plat recorded.
Make a motion to set a performance bond for Willow Crest Phase One in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, as suggested by the city engineer.
I'll second the motion.
First and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Excellent. Now we will move over to reports for discussion information. City planner, Ms. Castanza? City engineer, Mr. Owens?
Nothing, actually.
City attorney, Mr. Potter? Sir? Indication from the planning commission members? Ms. Qualls? Anderson? Mr. Powers? Ms. Kelly?
Nothing.
Mr. Burks?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Carroll?
Just one more, no, I'm joking, nothing tonight.
Jenkins?
Nothing tonight.
I also will have nothing, entertain a motion to?
Uh-uh, we got to go into, um, executive.
Okay, so entertain a motion. So we close this formal meeting and then open executive session? So entertain a motion to close active meeting?
Mr. Potter, just one second for my clarification. Um, we don't, we, we are closing the meeting and then going into executive? Okay, you want to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.